Good evening. I call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for March 24th, 2025. Our first action is a consideration of a motion to amend the agenda as posted to remove matters by board members for this meeting. Do I have a motion and a second for this item?
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda as posted to remove matters by the board members from this meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, I would like to speak against this. This is silencing free speech of any of the board members and instead of teaching our students how to respectfully disagree with colleagues on the board, unfortunately, this is just silencing them that if you don't like someone's speech or what they're bringing up, you're just going to silence them completely. And I don't think, one, that's not American, two, that's not who we are, and three, we need to be teaching our young people better. Thank you.
All right, thank you, noted. All right, Ms. Howard?
A motion is made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to remove matters by board members from the agenda for this meeting. Mrs. Fairman?
No.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed three to one.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's school board meeting. I hope you're all enjoying the nice spring weather, and I think I can officially say it's going to be around for a little bit, but don't get too excited because you know that hot, humid weather's coming real soon. So enjoy it while you can. Dr. Shandor is not with us tonight, but he, in his absence, because he's at a conference, we have the pleasure of having Dr. Jim Carroll up here with us tonight. Tonight, we are also excited to be joined by some special guests, Grafton High School's outstanding athletes, also known as state champions. Thank you for being here this evening. I would now like to read you the YCSD mission statement. "The mission of the York County Division is to ensure every student is valued, supported, and challenged through learning experiences which prepare them for a successful future." Would you please join me in one moment of silence? Now, I will share some information about our pledge leader, Armon Teague, a kindergarten, kindergartner at McGruder Elementary School. Army is an enthusiastic and respectful kindergartner at McGruder Elementary School. Army comes to school each day with a genuine smile and a positive attitude. He is always one of the first students to offer help to the teacher or to any student. He is consistently on task, he's focused, and works hard. When his teacher needs anything, she knows that she can count on Army to get the job done correctly and cheerfully. Army is very busy when he's not in school. He plays goalie for his hockey team, the Yorktown Whalers, he sings in his church choir, and plays T-ball. He has a wonderful, supportive family, which includes his mom, dad, two sisters, and a brother. His siblings all go to McGruder, and his mom is a great volunteer at the school. His dad is currently serving in the United States Army. The Teague family is a wonderful example of hard work, kindness, and perseverance. Please stand as Army leads us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and equal for liberty and justice for all.
We are excited to recognize Grafton's, Grafton High's, boys indoor track team as well as a state champion swimmer. Dr. Carroll, would you like to share the accomplishments of these athletes?
Thank you, Mrs. Goodwin. Yes, tonight, we are here to recognize the outstanding achievements of the Grafton High's Boys Indoor Track State Team, as well as Ryan Griffith, state champion swimmer. We're incredibly proud of Grafton High's Boys Indoor Track and Field Team for making school history by capturing their first-ever indoor state championship. The victory was a full-team effort with points being scored in every area of competition: sprints, middle distance, distance, field events, and relays. With points earned in 15 different areas, every athlete played a role in this achievement. Individual standouts that accounted for 47 points, first of all, Aaron Waddy led the charge with 24 of those points, claiming first in the 55-meter dash, third in the 300-meter, sixth in the 500-meter, and fourth in high jump. Then Connor Linehan added nine points with a second-place finish in the 1,000-meter and eighth in the 3,200-meter. Kenai Whiting earned six points by placing third in the 1,000-meter. And actually, why don't you guys stand up? So Aaron, Connor, Kenai, there you go. Zeke Hurst, there you go, Zeke, grabbed four points with his fifth-place finish in the 500-meter. Aiden Younger scored four points with a strong fifth in the shot put. Jude Yambu contributed one point with an eighth-place finish in the 55-meter hurdles. And then the relay, the relays contributed 16 points. The 4x400 relay team of Jude Yambu, Kenai Whiting, Mikhail Barnett, and Zeke Hurst dominated the field with a first-place finish. And the 4x800 relay team of Connor Linehan, Zeke Hurst, Justin Shannon, and Kenai Whiting brought home third place. There you go, there's your championship team. Unfortunately, our swimmer, Ryan Griffith, couldn't be here, but I do want to share, he's on his way? Oh. He just, he just, he just arrived. All right, well, go ahead and keep standing, Ryan. In the pool, Ryan Griffith won the state championship in the 100-yard backstroke with a blistering 48.90 seconds, earning All-American honors. Wait, you got to stand up because there's more, apparently. He also placed second in the 200-yard freestyle, a time of 1 minute, 40 seconds, .95, and helped lead the 200 medley relay to a second-place finish. Next year, Ryan will continue his academic and athletic career at Duke University. Congratulations to all our athletes on an incredible championship season. You made history, you did it together. I'd now like to invite Mr. Steve Gavin, the high school, Grafton High principal, and coaches to the podium so they can say a few words.
He's a state champion now, and I can't wait to see what he did as a Duke. So, thank you, guys, for coming. I'll let this coach to speak.
Just reiterating what Principal Gavin said, we truly appreciate the thanks and the congratulations that we've received from the school board, but one thing we want to definitely do as a team is to praise the bridge that brought us across, and that's our wonderful families, our parents, the community of York County in general. You've done nothing but support our team, whether that's through making sure they're at the bus on time, they're getting to practice and meet, or whether it's the community coming out and helping us raise funds in a car wash or anything. York County has stood behind us, and we are truly appreciative of what everything, the York County community, has done for this team and for us as a school district and a community. Thank you.
I'm super proud of the kids. It's a great group, and we'll be sad for the few that are moving on, won't be with us next year, but this is an awesome season, a highlight, yeah.
So I've been lucky enough to watch Ryan the last three years, and it's been such a joy. He's one of the most humblest athletes I've ever gotten to see, and he's been a great role model for all of our freshmen, sophomore, juniors coming up, and I'm just excited to see what he does at Duke.
So as you can tell, we are all very proud of our athletes, and they all help make every day a great day to be a Clipper. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just say?
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to say thank you to the team. As I saw you guys earlier, very proud of what you guys done. You made our community, York County community, very proud of what you've done, including the Bruton High last month. We, we're a testament that, as a community, we can raise great children by having a great parents to support us. Just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you've done, for bringing this to us, to our community. We are so proud of you. So congratulations and looking forward to your future.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to take a short break so we can get some pictures with the team and coaches. So first, if we could invite the indoor track team and coaches up to the front to get pictures with the board and Dr. Carroll, and then after that, we'll have Ryan Griffith and Coach come up and do the same. We will now recognize our seniors of the month for each school. When your name is announced, please stand along with your family members while we hear about your accomplishments. I'll ask each board member to announce and read about their students. So we're going to start with Bruton High School.
Yeah, there you go, everyone, everybody, yep, there you go. The senior of the month for April 2025 of Bruton High School is Joseph Downey. He's here with his parents, Mark and Kristen, and Bruton High School is proud to present Joseph Downey as our selection for the senior of the month. Joseph is a persistent, goal-oriented, motivated, kind, and friendly student who is respected by peers, faculty, and staff. Joseph has a passion for outdoors, particularly water-related activities. This passion led him to become a trusted lifeguard at our local community pool, serving as a mentor and supervisor for new lifeguards and ensuring the safety and enjoyment of all visitors. This passion also extends beyond the pool, as evidenced by his active participation in Williamsburg Boat Club rowing program. One of Joseph's most admirable qualities is his commitment to environmental stewardship. Recognizing the impact of waste on our precious landscapes, Joseph took the initiative to organize a trash cleanup along a section of the Colonial National Historic Parkway. Rallying classmates, family, and community members, he demonstrated not only his leadership, but also his ability to inspire others to take action for a greater cause. Joseph is an exceptional student whose determination, resilience, and community spirit make him an outstanding choice as Bruton's senior of the month for April. Congratulations.
Okay, next, we'll hear about Grafton High School Senior of the Month.
Yes, I would like to invite Brooke Fredenberg and her parents, Susan and David Fredenberg, to stand up, and I have one more, but I don't have a name, so welcome. Grafton is proud to recognize Brooke Fredenberg as our senior of the month. Brooke is a charismatic, respectful, and driven student who truly exemplifies what it means to be a well-rounded Clipper. Throughout her four years at Grafton, Brooke has made a lasting impact both in and out of the classroom. She has excelled as a student athlete, competing with varsity field hockey, indoor track, swim and dive, and varsity soccer teams, serving as a three-year captain in soccer. Brooke is also a dedicated member of multiple honor societies and a four-year member of Grafton's Superior Rank Band. Beyond school, Brooke volunteers as a delivery live church and with vacation Bible study school programs. She is pursuing a future in healthcare and is currently earning her CNA certification through the New Horizon Program. Her academic excellence and character have earned her over $45,000 in scholarships to Liberty University, where she will major in nursing. Congratulations, Brooke. We can wait, we cannot wait to see all the amazing things you're going to do. Thank you.
All right, now, we're going to hear about TAB High School Senior of the Month.
Hey, could I have Malani Darney's family stand up with her? Wonderful. TAB High School is excited to announce Malani Darney as April's Senior of the Month. Malani embodies the qualities of a well-rounded student, and she presents these through her exemplary academics, commitment to the community through her volunteer service, leadership both within the school and community, and her constant drive for new experiences and ideas. As a student of the Governor's School for Science and Technology, Malani has taken initiative to pursue her passion of working for a biotech corporation. She attended Virginia's highly competitive summer residential governor's school, where she mentored at the research facility Jefferson Labs. Malani won a full ride to UVA through the Jefferson Scholarship. She competed against students worldwide and went through multiple intensive interviews for this highly-regarded award. Malani entered the opportunity to enter the International Science and Engineering Fair in California and had her research recognized by university professors. Malani's extraordinary achievements have earned her the recognition as TAB High School's Class of 2025 Saludatorian. She plans on attending UVA as a Jefferson Scholar and pursuing her passion in biological engineering. Malani is compassionate toward her school and community while also being a strong leader. She was the founder of a club named Operation Smile that assisted people with surgeries they couldn't afford, and the club partnered with local hospital in foreign countries. She was also a leader in Model UN and the Medical Club. All the clubs she was a part of have reached out and accomplished amazing things for others. Her drive, creativity, leadership, and dedication are evident in everything she does. TAB has been very proud to have her as our student. Congratulations to Malani Darney.
Okay, and I have the honor of telling you about York High School Senior of the Month. Would Alice South and her family please stand? We are thrilled to honor Alice South as our senior of the month. Alice is an outstanding individual whose dedication and achievements set a remarkable example for her peers. As a prominent member of the Ivy Program, she exemplifies academic excellence and a commitment to learning. Alice is also captain of York High's, York High School Swim Team, where her leadership skills foster team spirit and excellence, motivating her teammates to achieve their personal bests. Alice's dedication to making a difference and willingness to serve others is evident through her extensive involvement in community service, such as participation on the York County Youth Commission, teaching swim lessons for dolphin swims, Youth Volunteer Corps, and her time spent in Nicaragua, spreading hope to those in need. In addition to her athletic and volunteer commitments, Alice has taken on leadership roles in our Student Council Association and multiple honor societies. She was also awarded our CTE Student of the Year in 2023, which is a testament to her hard work and passion for career and technical education. Her teachers have consistently praised her for her work ethic, integrity, and ability to uplift those around her. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. Okay, next, we have our Student Service Award and Volunteer Awards. Dr. Carroll, would you like to go down to the front? And I will ask Ms. Lisa Ruffier, McGruder Elementary Principal, to step forward while information is shared about the Student Service Award recipient from McGruder Elementary.
Yeah, come on, Lisa, you're not going to be left out here. Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh.
Yeah, I was going to.
Go for it, go for it.
The Student Service Award recipient from McGruder Elementary is Sylvie Berquist.
All right. Yeah, we got a platform.
And Mr. Schaefer's going to tell you all about Sylvie.
Yes. McGruder Elementary is proud to recognize Sylvie Berquist as the recipient of our Student Service Award. Since starting in McGruder in kindergarten, Sylvie has consistently brought positivity, compassion, and generosity to our school community. In the classroom, Sylvie is a thoughtful, enthusiastic learner and a supportive peer. She regularly volunteers to help classmates and offers encouraging feedback, as seen during a book club project where her uplifting attitude helped her group stay motivated through the challenges. Her classmates describe her as loving, caring, brave, and a great friend. Sylvie's impact extends into the school clubs, where her leadership and kindness shine. In Panther Chorus, she's known for her passion for music and serves as a positive role model. In Battle of the Books, she helped lead her team to a second-place finish with praise and encouragement that fostered true team spirit. In Sketchbook Club, she's recognized for her consistently kind and supportive presence. Beyond school, Sylvie's generosity continues. She welcomed a new kindergarten neighbor with a thoughtful card and sign, and during her performance in Chitty Chitty Bang Bang, she regularly celebrated and uplifted her fellow cast members. Sylvie is a shining example of service, leadership, and heart. We are so proud to honor her today.
The Volunteer of the Month from McGruder Elementary is Ms. Amy Berquist, and Mr. Schaefer will tell you about Ms. Berquist.
Could have had y'all just both come up at the same time. McGruder Elementary School is proud to nominate Ms. Amy Berquist as Volunteer of the Year for her outstanding dedication and meaningful contributions to our school community. This year, Amy played a pivotal role in launching the ECO Club, a grant-funded partnership with William &amp; Mary that provides students with hands-on experiences in nature, introduces potential careers in conservation and sustainability, and highlights the role of the environment in their lives. She has been instrumental in securing engaging speakers, leading a recycling lesson on transforming old T-shirts into tote bags, and coordinating a field trip to York River State Park. Amy has been a consistent presence at McGruder since 2019, volunteering weekly in classrooms, helping coordinate events such as the fall celebration and art reception, and supporting the PTA through teacher appreciation initiatives. She has organized school beautification projects with her Girl Scout troop, quietly provided support for students in need, and even arranged a memorable kindergarten field trip to the White House. Yeah. Through all her work, Amy brings warmth, insight, and care to everything she does. Her quiet leadership and genuine commitment continue to strengthen and uplift the McGruder community. Thank you.
Okay, now, now, I would like Ms. Amore Mikkel, TAB Middle School Principal, to step forward and remain up front while information is shared for both the Student Service Award recipient and the Volunteer of the Month for TAB Middle School. Hmm? Oh. Oh, sure, okay, thank you. Sure, thank you. The Student Service Award recipient this month for TAB Middle is Alexander Popoff Sanchez. Ms. Fairman, will you share some information about Alexander?
Absolutely. Alexander Popoff Sanchez is an eighth-grade student at TAB Middle School. His teachers and classmates describe him as a responsible, trustworthy friend who brings positive energy and a sense of humor. His leadership shows in a variety of roles, including national junior high school president, yearbook staff member, and a member of the TMS Chain Reactions Club, a club that supports new students entering TAB Middle. In addition to serving in these roles, Alex is also a member of the JV Cross Country and Soccer Team at TAB High School. When Alex is not in school, you can see him volunteering in the children's ministry at his church or playing soccer with the VA Rush Peninsula Team. Please give a big round of applause for Alex and his accomplishments and representing the TAB Middle School community so well.
The Volunteer for the Month for TAB Middle School is Ms. Carrie Hauser. Ms. Hauser, would you please join Dr. Carroll and Ms., or, I'm sorry, Ms. Hauser, up front while Ms. Fairman shares some information about you.
Thank you. Carrie Hauser is the Volunteer Award winner for TAB Middle School. She is currently PTSA President for TAB Middle School. She can often be seen helping with a variety of school events that support the culture and climate of TAB Middle School, including the TMS Dances, Roar Store, Teacher Appreciation Week, and the Eighth Grade Carnival. When she is not supporting TMS in her PTSA role, you can find her setting up meals for the boys' basketball team and cheering in the stands. Carrie does all of this while also maintaining an extremely important job of working with cancer patients and survivors. Her kindness and dedication to students, staff, and community does not go unnoticed. Please give Carrie a round of applause for her hard work and dedication to the TAB Middle School community.
We also have our March Volunteer of the Month for Grafton Bethel Elementary here with us this evening. Ms. Humble, would you and Ms. Margie Reese come up front while Mr. Pyavich shares information about Ms. Reese?
Tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing a truly outstanding volunteer whose dedication and enthusiasm have made a significant impact on our students. It is with great appreciation that we honor Margie Reese, our Volunteer of the Month for her incredible leadership in guiding our Battle of the Books team for the past two years. Ms. Reese has gone above and beyond to inspire a love of reading in our students. She has spent countless hours encouraging, coaching, and preparing the team, fostering not only a deep appreciation for literature, but also teamwork, critical thinking, and confidence. Her ability to make reading exciting and engaging has motivated our students to challenge themselves and support one another. Thanks to Ms. Reese's leadership, our Battle of the Books team has not only grown in knowledge, but in camaraderie, learning the value of perseverance and sportsmanship. Her commitment to our young readers has truly made a difference, and her passion for education shines through in everything she does. Ms. Reese and Ms. Staffy, our school librarian, successfully led the team that placed first in the division battle and the third at the regional battle in Williamsburg. On behalf of the Grizzly faculty, students, and families, we extend our deepest gratitude to Margie Reese for her dedication, time, and support, her efforts in shaping the next generation of readers and thinkers, and we are so grateful for her contributions. Please join me in congratulating Margie Reese, our well-deserved Volunteer of the Month.
Okay, congratulations to all our award recipients. We are now going to have a presentation by the York Foundation for Public Education, and Mr. Schaefer will tell you about that.
Ms. Glynnis Ellis, hey, Glynnis, York Foundation for Public Education member, to step forward and assist Dr. Carroll as they present gifts to each of our award recipients. Please come up front when you hear your name called. Congratulations to Army Teague, a kindergartner from McGruder Elementary School for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients. We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients. Sylvie Berquist from McGruder Elementary School, and Alexander Popoff Sanchez from TAB Middle School. We also congratulate our Seniors of the Month for this month. Joseph Downey from Bruton High School, Brooke Fredberg from Grafton High School, Malani Darney from TAB High School, and Alice Souths from York High School. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with their donor, Jean Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Sweet Frog gift card is also being donated by Derek Mahan from Sweet Frog. Join me in congratulating all of our award recipients. There you go.
The board is now going to take a short recess to meet with our award recipients and their families. We will now reconvene the meeting. We do not have any unfinished business, so we're going to move into presentations. And tonight, we have the 25-26 Annual Plan for Title VI-B Federal Funding. Dr. Carroll, do you want to introduce our presenter?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Goodwin. I would like to invite Ms. Tremaine Hopkins, Director of Special Education, to the podium to present the 2025-2026 Annual Plan for Title VI-B.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
I am before you to share information about the Special Education Annual Plan. The provisions of the 2004 Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, also known as IDEA, and regulations governing special education for children with disabilities in Virginia requires local education agencies to submit an annual plan for providing special education and related services to children with disabilities. The annual plan serves as a formal agreement between the local school board and the Virginia Department of Education for implementing federal and state regulations governing special education. Additionally, annual plans must be reviewed by our school board as well as our local Special Education Advisory Committee. As a function of IDEA, we are preparing an annual plan for use of federal funds, specifically Title VI-B, Section 611 and Section 619. Section 611 serves as the umbrella of the grant funds as it covers ages 3 to 21, whereas the Section 619 specifically addresses preschool-aged children with disabilities. In developing the annual plan, we are required to provide notice of the child fund process as well as special education supports available to students with disabilities who may attend private school or who are homeschooled. As such, my team provided written notice to all private and homeschool families within our locality. This notice afforded private and homeschool families an opportunity to participate in a virtual or in-person information session, which was held on March 5. Also, on March 18, this proposed annual plan was reviewed by our CACT Board Committee on the 18th. When applying for federal funds, school divisions must certify that they will comply with several requirements outlined in the grant and address any barriers to equitable access for students with disabilities. I'd like to highlight a few areas of the grant assurances for you here. As noted, we certify that we have, in effect, policies, procedures, and programs which are administered to comply with IDEA and its federal implementing regulations. YCSD must also report progress on the previous year's annual plan, which I'll speak to further on the future slide. Additional certifications of the annual plan include providing special education to students who may be in jail. However, there are no local or regional jails within our county to serve students with disabilities. Finally, when required by the state, some school divisions must set aside 15% of their federal funds for coordinated early intervening services. I am proud to report that we are not one of those divisions, as we are not a school division identified as having significant disproportionality as it relates to over-identification of students with a disability or over-identification of students with a particular impairment. As I mentioned on the previous slide, when applying for grant funds, school divisions must report how they have implemented the previous year's funds. The information before you illustrates YCSD's use of the Section 611 funds from last year. Funds were used predominantly for the salary and benefits of the positions recorded here. As note, as a note, the funded column does not represent YCSD's staffing in totality. Rather, we have much more staff to support our programming, which is represented on the far-right column. YCSD's implementation of the preschool Section 619 grant was also used, as we indicated it in the grant application. This grant helped to fund 1.5 FTE paraeducator salary and benefits. Additionally, materials and supplies to support curriculum were purchased. Proportionate set aside is a component of the grant that requires school divisions to set aside funds for parentally-placed students. Parentally-placed students are those who are homeschooled or those who have been placed in a private school by their families. The Virginia Department of Education uses a calculation tool to determine the set-aside amount associated with providing special education or related services to students who are parentally-placed. The York County School Division is required to set aside $3,083 for parentally-placed students. For several years, those funds have been used to provide speech-language services to those students who may require it. The Title VI-B grant also requires school divisions in Virginia to meet a maintenance-of-effort obligation, often referred to as MOE. MOE requires that YCSD spend at least the same amount or greater on special education services that was spent the previous year. YCSD has consistently met MOE requirements. As I shared earlier, the grant funding is divided into two areas, Section 611 and Section 619. Like many of the grants we receive, the Title VI-B grant has a two-year award period. For example, the grant funds we are applying for now will be effective July 1, 2025, and must be spent down by September 30, 2027. The graph before you illustrates our proposed plan for use of the 611 funds in the amount of $2,500,426. This is down $81,000 from the previous year. As you can see, the majority of the funds are used for salary benefits, employee salary and benefits. The specific allocations of these funds are for 19.4 special education teachers, 16.5 paraeducators, one registered behavior technician, one interpreter, two oral communication facilitators, one speech pathologist, and one special education coach.
Ms. Hawkins?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Could I ask, what is a restricted indirect cost?
I'm going to get there.
Thank you.
So, board members, you may notice in your executive summaries that there are some additional paraeducators, but please note that I am only reporting the number of paraeducators that will be funded through the fiscal year 26 grant award. Restricted indirect costs represents the administrative costs to the implementation of our programming, so for example, professional development. This cost is calculated at 2.5% of the grant award totaling $60,986. You're welcome. This chart shows the funding request for Section 619, the Early Childhood Special Education Grant funding, in the amount of $54,309. This is a $257 decrease from last year. As you can see, the majority of the funds are used for employee salary and benefits, totaling $38,180 for 1.5 paraeducators, materials and supplies in the amount of $5,118 for preschool curriculum and equipment, and also restricted indirect costs at $1,325. I also believe it is important to share the total cost required to fund special education programming in our division. As reported in last year's annual school report, special education programming expenses totaled nearly $27 million. To cover those expenses, funding from federal, state, and federal budgets were utilized. As you can see, the majority of the special education programming is covered by local funds at $18,718,773, 20% of that funding from state at $5,262,454, and 10% from federal In closing, our next steps are to obtain consent from the school board as presented to you in tonight's agenda and submit the application to the Virginia Department of Education by May 10, as -- 9, sorry, as required. The information that I've shared tonight, I hope that you found to be clear and comprehensive, but at this time, I will take any questions that you may have.
Ms. Hawkins, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So, let me just get back to that slide. Section 611, you said we're getting 2.5 million in funding, and it's down $81,000. What's the difference? Why did we lose that $81,000?
So, I can't tell you the exact reason. The state does give us the amount at which we can apply for, but there are factors such as student enrollment. I do believe your poverty count, things of that nature, influence the amount at which you are provided.
Is that like $81,000 equally spread in percentages? Kind of like, you know, it's like just certain amount of money for each category, for salaries, benefits, and restricted indirect costs? Or it's specifically into the salaries or in benefits?
So, it's just that total overall award amount that we received last year was $81,000 more than the $2.5 million that I reported tonight.
Okay. And on FY '24 annual school report, the first SPED, we had 26, almost $27 million, with the local government giving us 70% in an amount of like 18, almost 19,000. Do you know, maybe Mr. Bowman can tell, what is the amount that we have for the FY '25 for this SPED?
Thank you, Mr. Pyavich. So, it's not an amount that we specifically budget for the program itself. We know it's going to be at least $26 million, and of that, it's going to be the same -- about the same for local expenses. But as you -- as what's challenging with the special education program and that maintenance of effort, where we're having to at least maintain the same level of expenditure effort, that's assuming that we have the same number of kids with the same number of disabilities. Well, that's not always the case. We have changing enrollment and changing disabilities, and so those costs fluctuate. And for us, we've seen a continued increase in those special education students, and we've seen an increase in costs. We have to provide the services. We have to incur the cost to provide those services, and that's why the majority of it comes out of the local.
So, this is basically, we will need that MOE that you're talking about with these numbers from the previous -- okay.
Yes. So, to just reiterate what Mr. Bowman was saying, that we will need to spend at least that nearly $27 million next year, because that's about what it's costing us presently.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
I noticed in there we have budgeted for the behavior technician.
Yes.
So, I know we have the special ed pairs. What is behavior technician's role? How does it differ from your pair role?
Yes. So, our registered behavior technicians are credentialed, right? And so, they have taken coursework and had supervisory training and hours to become an expert, if you will, on behavior regulation, behavior management, things of that nature. Our paraeducators, while we do provide training if they work with higher-knee students, they are required to have the same credentialing to support behavior the way the registered behavior technicians are. It is a fairly new position, I would say, in our division, in that we found it to be an extreme benefit presently in our elementary schools. And so, that's presently how we're using them, and that's the difference.
Do they have to -- are these ABA-certified, or is they don't have that?
So, they're not, but they do follow that principle. They fall under the guidance of our lead BCBA, that behavior analyst, and so she's their supervisor, if you will. And so, the principles at which they're going to utilize are under the ABA guidance.
Could you give an example or some examples of what the behavior technicians actually do?
Yeah. So, at the elementary school presently, they're using a variety of ways, and we really look at the data and needs in our building. So, I will say, Dr. Butler and his team does a great job of making sure that we have the data that really tells us where our needs are. If, you know, there's a particular student that needs some additional support, you know, with behavior regulation, or if there's a program in that building. So, we have communication support programs, or we have behavior support programs. And so, oftentimes, we allow the data to determine where it is that resource is best met. There are students that, you know, just need that kind of check-in, check-out process, or an individual to start their day to, you know, get themselves regulated or to be refreshed in a day, just to have that moment, kind of a cooldown period, if that's necessary. And so, we utilize those individuals in that way as well.
Thank you.
I'd just like to comment that this is a federal program that's mandated, and yet the federal government gives the least amount of money for it. I'm just saying.
Yeah. We appreciate the funding that we receive, but there often needs to be more. So, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our HR update. And that, Dr. Carroll, who's?
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Goodwin. Dr. David Wright's Chief Human Resources Officer is bringing us an HR update which relates to our strategic plan priority for highly effective talent. Dr. Wright?
Thank you, Dr. Carroll. Madam Chair, members of the board, it's been a few months since I have brought you some HR updates, so I've saved some up so we could have a nice, robust update for you this evening. On this slide, the position of an adaptive PE, so it's no addition to our pay plan, but this job description will be adjusted to reflect this specific position. We also have the benefits enrollment window. We are changing that from a 30-day window, 31-day window, to a 14-day window for new hires and qualifying events, and this will reduce our employees from having to pay catch-up deductions, and this will benefit our employees in case catch-up deductions are necessary. Bus assistant, eight-hour position, we are adjusting this to a seven- or eight-hour day for our bus assistants. And currently, the pay plan, our bus assistants are six and a half hours, and this adjustment will mirror what our bus driver's daily rate is for those positions. We also have a custodial supervisor. We're changing from non-exempt to exempt, a grade 17 to a grade 21, and we will take the current manager of custodial services vacancy and distribute those job responsibilities to the three custodial supervisors. And this in turn will also give the division a savings of about $45,000. We have a dual enrollment pre-calculus teacher proposal for FY '26. This is in the teacher plan, but this position will provide more opportunities for students by having this option, and adding it to the pay plan allows for the hiring process to begin for this very hard-to-fill position. And lastly, we have a CTE instructional specialist. It's on the teacher pay plan 26. And instead of two career coaches, and due to the current VDOE expectations proposed for YCSD, proposed, YCSD will hire one CTE instructional specialist to support the division's secondary CTE programs and initiatives, and this will also give the division a savings of about $45,000. And that is it for all the HR updates this evening. You like that? Robust?
Are there any questions for Dr. Wright? All right. Thank you, Dr. Wright.
Thank you.
Mrs. Goodwin, if I could just add?
Sure.
The change with the bus driver assistance, it mirrors what we did with the drivers a couple of years ago, and we found that that has helped with the retention that we've had. So, we're hoping that brings us the same type of retention, because we do have openings in that area. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Wright for leading the work on the other retasking of those positions, those two positions, that brings back a $90,000 savings.
Good. All about saving money. Okay. All right. Now, we're going to go into the comments of citizens. Before I open up public comments, I'll share a few remarks. The school board provides public The school board provides public comment period for the public to comment on matters related to the business or duties of the school board and school division. School board policy KD slash BDDH governs these public comment periods. I would encourage citizens to review this policy prior to speaking before the board. Briefly, the school board expects speakers to refrain from any speech or conduct that is a clear violation of the law, such as abusive or threatening language that incites criminal behavior or that creates an actual disruption to the meeting. We ask that speakers direct their comments to the school board and not to members of the audience. Violations of school board policy KD BDDH may result in a warning or termination of a speaker's time by the chair. This sanction is immediately appealable to the whole board at the speaker's option. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. Speakers will present their comments at the podium. A timer is visible to speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The timer will begin after you state your name and district or area of residence. I now open the public participation of comments by citizens. Our first speaker this evening is Pam Pouchot.
Good evening. I'd like to make a public service announcement before I begin. The food bank is in desperate need of donations. They've lost a lot of federal funding, so anybody out there who has either the funding or food, whatever, please donate to the food bank. Now, back to the work at hand. My name is Pam Pouchot, I live in District Four. This Thursday, May first, at noon, is a national day of peaceful civil disobedience, rallies, and demonstrations. Students and staff are encouraged to walk out of school for at least fifteen minutes to protest the Trump administration's attack on education, healthcare, jobs, reproductive rights, civil and human rights, immigrants, due process, and the destruction of our economy, the environment, and using the Justice Department for personal revenge. Your voice matters, stand up for democracy. The Title VI Civil Rights Act prohibits the president from telling schools what to teach and can't withhold funds without due process. School boards are being extorted, obey, or lose funding. Trump and his Department of Education's deadline requirements for all school boards to sign a certificate, certification of compliance to stop the implementation of all of Trump's misconceived ideas was postponed until April twenty-fourth by a federal judge's restraining order. While I've read many of the Hampton Road School Board's decisions, I have heard, I have heard nothing about whether York County has agreed to Trump's extortion. The Department of Education should not be in the business of delivering ideologically-driven threats from a federal administration bent on weaponizing the term DEI to harm the very students those efforts are designed to support. If you have given in, then we might as well quit teaching. I found it interesting that one requirement was to forbid teaching students anything that might accuse them of being oppressors in a racial hierarchy. How do you teach about slavery, the genocide of indigenous people, concentration camps, World War II Japanese-American internment, Jim Crow, women's rights or civil rights? These were promulgated by white Christian males. Students are not responsible for the actions of their ancestors. Keeping students ignorant of painful history serves no purpose. We need to celebrate the successes of not only white men, but women, immigrants, and minorities. Virginia once closed schools rather than integrate. Now, schools may not discriminate against race, color, or national origin. What is not mentioned is gender, sexual orientation, religion, or immigration status. Apparently, discrimination is still legal. We are all human beings and should have equal rights under the law. If the school board has signed this agreement or planned to do so, you are giving up your rights to the federal government in exchange for monetary protection. This is the absence of consent by the governed and submission by the frightened. We deserve to know what you did and why. Silence on this matter is not acceptable. Extortionists rarely stop with their first demand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Ms. Yvonne Johnson.
Good evening. I am Yvonne Johnson, and I own home in District One, Mark Schaefer's district. And I just wanted to say, first of all, ditto to what Pam said. So, some of the comments I wanted, some of the comments I wanted to make, she brought out. But one of the most important school desegregation cases came after Brown versus Board of Education, and it happened right here in our backyard. I typed on my tablet today, because I didn't have access to my laptop. When ordered by the courts to integrate schools, instead of integrating schools, they came up with freedom of choice. Green versus New Kent County challenged that, because it ruled, and the courts ruled that freedom of choice plan was not a sufficient method to achieve integration. Students tended to choose the schools that they were already going to, and so white students continued to go to white schools, black students continued to go to black schools. And this trend, and that was everywhere during that time. Children who attended McGruder, then and today, were not aware of who John McGruder was. Children today can't comprehend what it was like to grow up when, like, I remember the separate water fountains, the water fountains and the swimming pools, the movie theaters that were labeled colors. The children do not know that. They aren't taught that in school. So, they weren't taught about John McGruder as well. That was a very painful time in our history. Our parents shielded us, just like the parents today shield their children. And parents have a lot of say, so a lot of things are being whitewashed. They're still not able to comprehend what it was like. So, when children don't know their identity, they don't have something to feel good about them. Parents don't want their children to learn about things that make them feel bad or lowers their self-esteem. What about the children who are forced to go to those type of schools? A lot of people say it costs a lot. That cost has been paid. This nation was built on slavery, free labor. So, and this community has bounced back each and every time, supporting each other, resilient, and trying to lift up. I don't have any doubt that there won't be a way to fund this. So, do the right thing and rename McGruder.
Thank you. Okay, our third and final speaker is Mary Lassiter.
Good evening. Mary Lassiter, Bruton District. The report from the York administration, the report from the York administrations regarding changing of the name of Bruton, I mean, not sorry, of McGruder Elementary, has several conjectures. There is no reasonable conclusion that a segregated school for white children would be named for a village that was predominantly black. There was a very low percentage of white residents. Most importantly, McGruder School built in nineteen-twenty was in Bigler's Mill rather than McGruder. This is a fact from the report that the Dr. Carroll and Dr. Butler presented to, to the superintendent. There is a map from nineteen-oh-six that shows the proximity of Bigler's Mill to McGruder, to McGruder. That would have been a more suitable name, but they wanted to honor John B. McGruder, just as Thomas Newman did in naming the post office in eighteen-ninety-five. J.B. McGruder did not name the area as York, as insinuated in that report. Donald L. Smith presented documentation regarding the naming of the post office. Thus, the area took the name. The school was named McGruder Elementary, and not THE McGruder Elementary, as referred to in the report. He was well-known and revered by southern whites because of his murdering acts against blacks and Africans, burning down houses in Hampton to hinder the safety of said people. There was a McGruder School in Newport News, a McGruder Boulevard, a McGruder Voting District, all named after J.B. McGruder. No first name was necessary. Frederick Douglass and James Weldon Johnson were not even named in nineteen-fifty-one, when McGruder School was built. Frederick Douglass and James Weldon Johnson opened in nineteen-fifty-four. In nineteen-fifty-two, in the Daily Press, these schools were referred, were referred to as Bruton Elementary School for Negroes and Consolidated Negro High School and Elementary School. So, what bearing that had on the name of McGruder School? None whatsoever. Dr. Butler's dissertation, Dr. Butler's dissertation is not relevant to how the schools, how the school was named. McGruder School for Colored Children was established in eighteen-sixty-eight and is not related to a segregated white school built approximately fifty-two years apart. There is no proof in, that the area was referred to as McGruder in eighteen-seventy-six as stated in the report. I checked with SWM to see why the researcher wall would say that. There is a dissertation written by a Women Mary student that stated Mount Gilead Church was established in eighteen-seventy-six.
All right. I now close public participation for comments by citizens. We will now proceed into financial matters, and I will ask Mr. Pyavich to discuss financial matters.
Madam Chair, thank you so much for allowing me to present financial matters. We do have claims certified for payments for March twenty-twenty-five. We have significant expenditures for March, instructional-related expenditures totaling approximately four-hundred-fifty-eight thousand, six-hundred-sixty-five dollars, and includes payments to Allied Healthcare, Beautiful Minds Speech, Care Staff Partners, Emily Haynes, Max, Maximum Healthcare Services, New Horizons, Plan B Academy, Purple Communications, Scenario Learning, SHI, Versity, the Faison Center, Stepping Stones Group. Payment for technology-related items, approximately two-hundred-seventy-four thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty dollars, and includes payment to CW, CDW, Cox Communications, Microsoft, She Communications, and VA Business Systems. Payments for operations and maintenance totaling five-hundred-and-twenty thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars, and includes payments to Belfour Group, Dominion Energy, Greiner, Hampton Road Sanitation District, Newport News Water Works, ODP Business Solutions, Reliance Acquisitions, Republic Services, Riverside Paper, Train Incorporated, and Virginia Natural Gas. Transportation-related expenses including payment to Kingmore Supply, which include one-fifty-five passenger special education bus and some miscellaneous supplies. Payments for school nutrition services totaling four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, five-hundred-and-ten dollars, and includes payments to Made Right Special, Sodesco, and the Matthews Group. Payments related to capital projects totaling one-million, ten-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty dollars, and includes payments to APT acquisitions, which is for the TAB High School Turf Field and Lights, Mobile Leaks, Simpson Ultimate, Versity Brands. That's it. Consideration of approval of financial reports for March twenty-five continued with significant changes relating to the operational budgets. For March revenues, state revenues is approximately eight-point-two million higher in March FY twenty-five when compared to March FY twenty-four. The change is due to increase in student enrollment, at-risk funding, and the state's portion of the five-point-five percent compensation increase for FY twenty-five. Federal revenues in approximately two-point-one million less in FY twenty-five due to the expiration of the one-time Esro stimulus grant in FY twenty-five. For expenditures, expenditures for instructional are approximately four-point-five million higher in March twenty-five when compared to March twenty-four, due to, due to the five-point-five increase in salaries, increase in employer health premiums, and additional position added for FY twenty-five. Expenditures for transportations are approximately one-point-one million higher, and expenditures for operations are about one-point-three million higher, higher in FY twenty-five due to the increase in salaries and increase in employer health premiums. Expenditures for technology have increased about one-point-one million due to the increase in salaries and benefits and a transfer out of seven-hundred-thousand dollars to the technology reserve funds. Significant changes relating to the school nutrition budget. For revenues and expenditures, school nutrition revenue is slightly lower in March FY twenty-five when compared to March twenty-twenty-four due to the number of inclement weather days and fewer meals being served. School nutrition expenditures are about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar less in March twenty-five due to the timing at which Sodesco invoiced are received and payments are processed. I am presenting consideration of approval of Resolution twenty-five dash nineteen. Resolution twenty-five dash nineteen requires the board's approval authorizing procurements of more than hundred-thousand dollars and change orders greater than fifty thousand. There are three items on the resolution for FY twenty-five totaling one-million, seven-thousand dollars, and nine items on the resolution for FY twenty-six totaling seven-point-five million, the details of which can be viewed on the board docs. Madam Chair, I now move to approve financial matters as listed.
I'll second. Okay, discussion? Questions? All right, Ms. Howard.
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve financial matters as listed. Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman.
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich.
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin.
Yes.
Motion passed four to zero.
All right. We have no action items. We don't have a policy discussion. We do not have a policy first read. We do have a policy second read action. This is Policy B, School Board Governance.
Mrs. Goodwin, I'm sorry, we need the consent calendar.
Consent calendar. Number thirteen.
I'm just rolling right ahead. Sorry, I apologize. Let me back it up.
So, you need a motion for it?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve consent, consent calendar as listed.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
Mr. Pyavich made a motion and was seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve consent calendars listed. Mrs. Fairman.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich.
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin.
Yes.
Motion passed four to zero.
I was just testing to see if you would catch that. Okay, now, let's see, we have no, no first reading, that's where I left off, but we do have the policy second reading, School Board Governance and Operations. Ms. Berry, are there any changes since the last reading?
No, there are no changes.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Again, I'd like to make the comment that we need to keep the board matters on the agenda, so that all of the board members have the freedom of speech to be able to speak about any concerns that they have for their district or the overall York County School Division at any school board meeting, so that we are fully transparent to the community, the parents, the students, and the taxpayers, as well as those who are concerned about York County schools.
Okay. Okay, can I please have a motion and a second to approve Policy B, School Board Governance and Operations of the York County School Board Policy Manual?
I move that we approve Policy B, School Board Governance and Operations.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to approve the revisions of Policy B, School Board Governance and Operations. Mrs. Fairman?
No.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed three to one.
Okay, and now we will have the report of the superintendent.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Goodwin. Once again, congratulations to the Grafton students recognized earlier for their athletic achievements. I also want to thank everyone involved in the Special Olympics feet meet that we had last week. Mrs. Hopkins and her team did a wonderful job, and we had a great day for it, weather-wise, and I think everybody had a great time. Finally, we have roughly thirty school days left in the school year. These are important days for two reasons, and we're going to need our families to help us out. First, it is testing season, and so please be aware of the tests your student will take, and make sure that they are coming to school with a full stomach and a good night's sleep, so that they can perform at the level that is reflective of the work they've put in this year. Also, division's accreditation is measured partly on the level of chronic absenteeism, and the reason for that is attendance matters. So, chronic absenteeism includes all absences for a student, excused and unexcused. So, let's please make sure our students finish the year strong and attend every day. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. I know our teachers are probably eagerly counting down those days, as well as the students. Okay, at this time, is there anyone who wishes to?